The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This morning, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Turner Sloss.
To catch my breath on these stairs. Would you all please bow your heads? Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, the activity of our looms. We ask that you continue to guide us, keep us, help us to do your will. Use us as vessels to work for your people under your mercy and your grace, in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, may I have approval in the absence of Commissioner Fairchild?
Still moved to approve the absence of Commissioner Fairchild?
Second, Your Honor.
It has been probably moved in second to approve, excuse, the absence of Commissioner Fairchild. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, the minutes, may I have motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the May 21st meeting, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, communications and petitions, Ms. Blackshear?
There are none, Your Honor.
There are none. Presentations, okay, our favorite presentation, Mr. Steve Gondal, Director of Planning Neighborhoods and Development, comes to the podium with the monthly update on all the great work that you're doing.
Good morning, Commissioner. Commissioners, City Manager and Clerk, Steve Gondal, Department of Planning Neighborhoods and Development, with the April 2025 activity for the Dayton Recovery Plan demolition activity. All right, last month in April, we saw 20 structures removed. Thirteen of those were from ODOD, four under ARPA, and three on general fund. To date, that puts us at 82 for the year. Again, you'll see that we're really accelerating our previous benchmarks and targets since we did 208 in all of 24, and we're already at 82 in these first few months of 2025. In March, we had 75 piles. April, we removed seven. We did, we added one in the month, ending the month at 69. So again, we're starting to make some progress on knocking down that number. For a while there, we were stuck in the high 90s, and so picking up the pace with these removals, getting, making some progress, removing more than we're adding. That lone fire you'll see there up in the Riverdale community, the activity for all of April, mostly in the city, we did have a few with our partnership with the land bank through the ODOD contract, just over the city lines in Jefferson Township there. But we view that as kind of also beneficial to our residents that are in those far western communities that are experiencing blight right on the edge there in our neighboring townships. And then to date, you'll see the progress for 2025. And again, surprisingly, because we are accelerating the ODOD demolitions, those are predominantly in the non-ARPA area, so you'll see more dots outside of the green than in the green in the first part of '25. All right, structures added to our nuisance list in the month of April, we had 10 added, so to date, we're up to 36 for the year. Again, trying to keep that number down to a steady level, but still kind of on the same average as the previous months. And our pipeline, so we accelerated a lot of the work to prepare for ODOD in the previous month, so April, we're now actually working through the approved properties for demolition. So we had no, there actually was not a need to do any title or survey or remediation work. Much of that has already occurred previously or is occurring in this month of May. And our before and afters, so April, I would say what was unique about it was it was several high-profile, multi-day, multi-week projects. This Ferguson Park actually is right by the Dayton Leadership Academy. It was kind of a remnants of an old playground there. We worked with our colleagues and Public Works, and we agreed, you know, removing it, everything on that playground was obsolete. And so, again, providing new opportunities in that area with the vacant lot on the right. Same thing just around the corner on Negley, this abandoned commercial structure, as you could imagine, have been very problematic for the community, for our friends in police and fire, just for everyone in general. And so clearing out that structure has made a significant, and I appreciate many of you went out last month and saw the area, that is a major reason why that area is so now open and visible from the street, so that way, removing a lot of the issues we had with trespassing and other incidents in that area because of that structure. And then wrapping up was the two church properties on Salem, 1060 and 1038. That also was a significant undertaking, but now having that site ready for future opportunities, which according to the adopted plans, we're hoping for multifamily, potentially senior housing in, on those sites. So that, again, though, that was one that took several weeks just of the sheer size and nature of the, of those structures there. So April, again, maintaining the steady progress, but much of the time with the crews was committed to these much larger sites, more complicated sites. I know already looking at the main numbers, I'll have good news, but that's all I'm going to say. I got to save something for that. So on that note, I appreciate your time, and I will take any questions you might have.
I appreciate all the work that you've done, especially in and out of the council reign that we've had this last several, several weeks. So, I don't know if we have some questions, comments? Commissioner Turner Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gondal, and all of your staff, Mr. Daniels and the entire team. I appreciate all of the, the work and the efforts. But while you have this picture up here, 1060, I don't want us to get back in that habit of continuing the remnants of some previous structures, and I see we still have steps there. We ran into that in the past, I know, so I hope that we're going to go back.
Those are gone.
Okay, very good.
They cleared them all, yeah. I know that that had been issued.
Before and after.
Yeah, so no, steps, everything, yeah, everything is gone.
I do see that, thank you.
But I appreciate it, because I know that we've talked about that and make sure that those are always included in our contracts, everything from the sidewalk back.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple of questions, I know we've talked about this before. 300 Fernwood, do we know where we are in that process? And 200, 203, excuse me, Grove?
Yep. 203 Grove, we, my staff has, so that was Old North Dayton. The property had insurance. We were working with the son of the deceased homeowner as of last week, moving him along, trying to be mindful and sympathetic, but at the same point, that it did occur in January, and that it was time to move forward with removal. So that is, that is a firepower removal that will be handled by private insurance.
Okay.
And we have given, and we have given him the names of vendors that the land bank uses, as well as us, to reach out to, and I think he is under contract with one of them as of last week, so.
Do we, just out of curiosity, is there a timeframe? Do we give, like, if the, any deadlines in terms of when the structure should be removed? Is it 60, 90 days, 180 days? Do we?
Yeah, that's one where, you know, he has been in communication, we, you know, waited for their fire investigation, their insurance investigation to complete. I think staff was overly, well, was respectful of his position. He's been very emotional, but trying to do it not so. Ideally, we would have liked it once the insurance had completed it, and, because we do have a escrow from that insurance company, and so ideally, once we receive that, we would like to, and that's typically, I can, I think that fire was in January, we received the escrow in April, that we would like things to proceed. And so I told the staff that, I understand you're, you're trying to provide good customer service and be sympathetic, at the same point, now that the insurance company has gone, we need to move forward.
Okay.
And let's be supportive of him, as difficult as it is, it needs to be removed. So we're optimistic, like I said, we heard as of Friday that he is, he's under contract with one of the vendors, so. But normally, to your question, we, we wait for the fire, and escrows usually come in weeks to maybe months, and like in this situation, that fire was mid-January, and by mid-April, we had the escrow. So there is a little bit of delay and lag in there, but at that point, we would, we do start communications about the, oftentimes, we'll even start it before to give them a heads-up. They want to start making calls, and then once that insurance process closes, we'll encourage them to move forward with the removal.
Okay.
And then Fernwood, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm going to ask staff to move that to the start of the power removal, once we're done with, so I had mentioned, we'll probably work through ODOD through the end of June, so we're about a month away. That if we can move Fernwood up to the first five on the ARPA, hopefully in July and August, we'll definitely try to make that, we'll return back to the ARPA work, so.
All right, and there's no means for us to work these pieces simultaneously, because again, I know we have the ODOD deadline, but a number of these structures have been sitting for years. We receive it, I know all of us, and as well as the city manager's office, the commission office in its entirety, we've received a number of complaints. I know Mr. Squire has received complaints, your office has received complaints about not only 300 Fernwood, 1310 West Fairview as well is a concern. There is a, a, a large porter potty, if you will, that's sitting on the sidewalk, which is impeding our city code, and, and we want to make sure that we are addressing these issues.
Yeah.
These are issues that the neighborhoods, associations, and members of the community have raised very, very frequently, and so again, if we could just put some emphasis and some urgency on these issues.
Yeah.
Because again, I know that many of us have received a number of calls, and I know you all are doing the very best that you can, given the, the tight deadline constraints and manpower and so on and so on. The weather's not helping, so if you could, please, put urgency on those issues.
Yeah, the one, yeah, so right now, you know, with the ODODs, these are routine, and so what I, you know, about running like dual paths, so the vendors, when they switch into like pile removal mode, they have to line up a whole other bevy of vendors to come in, and so what happens is, to make it worth that time and cost saving for us, is that they then bunch, that's why they ask us, we bunch them all together, because what is, it's like, it's a several-step process where different vendors are coming in to line the trucks, and so getting them to jump out of the routine demos and back in there, it's hard, because the, the smaller vendors want basically to have that consistent, steady work. And so, just a point, like last week, we had seven demos in one day, because they're routine.
Yeah.
And the, the vendors are in this, like, they understand the charge of getting done in June, and so because they're not doing that now, when they switch back to the fire piles, they then line up those, and they tell those subs, like, all right, we're going to be working probably six days a week, and they're out there, so it's, they try to scale them up, because then they're trying to buy the plastic lining wrap for the trucks in bulk, and so why, I mean, trust, if I, if I could have gotten Fernwood out, I would have, if I was wise and able, I would have done it months ago, but there, it's, it's just them working with the smaller vendors.
Okay.
And so that's why I'm saying is, I will work with our staff.
Thank you.
That if we can move Fernwood to the start of that, because once they, we say, okay, now we're done with the ODOD, we're going to switch back, they will line all that up, and they'll be charging six days a week, but it's keeping those, those, the small environmental vendors, trucking companies teed up, where they have five to seven ready to go, and they're just on a pace of, if anybody has seen any of the firepower removals, I mean, they have four trucks lined, ready to go, you know, with the lining there. So it's, it's a process. That's why it is hard and frustrating, but I understand why they're hard, they're not able to jump out of the routine, back into that for a one-off, but we'll definitely make it a point to look at Fernwood on the start of the.
Commissioner, I just want to, as you all know, you know, there's a lot of moving parts with this, and we are well aware that demolition is a high priority across the whole city, and we get complaints across the whole city. So I have charged the staff to be equitable and to manage this system across the city, right? And so we recognize that there are folks that get louder at times, but we also recognize that, as, as explained, we can't just drop and move, because then it creates unintended consequences to the work we're doing across the entire city. So I just want you to know the direction that the staff have been given, and, you know, they have been working with great urgency, trying to move through this five-year demolition plan as quickly and efficiently as possible.
No, that's understandable, and I'm completely, and I am sensitive to all of that, but again, and I appreciate the additional context, but if we could, I'll check back in mid-July, August, to see where we are on Fernwood, as well as with 43 Victor, the garage behind 43 Victor, 31 Victor, 41 Santa Clara, 128, 130 Marathon.
And Commissioner, if you can make sure that Ms. Jackson has all of those addresses for us.
I will, yes, definitely.
So that we can get them in Dayton Divers and track them accordingly, that'd be helpful, too.
Yes, absolutely. I would definitely do my part in that regard. That's all I have. Again, I thank you for all of your efforts, you and your entire, your entire staff and the team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I'm good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's been made real clear how hard you guys are working.
Yeah, you're doing a good job.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Okay, so calendar items, Ms. Blackshear, any additions, deletions, or comments on the calendar?
I have comments, Your Honor. After last week's commission meeting, it was brought to my attention that ordinance number 32146-25 was used for legislation related to the public hearing that was held on May 7. At last week's meeting, there was a first reading of ordinance number 32146-25, amending the city's appropriation for the year 2025. After consultation with the law department, and to keep our record clear, calendar item number 19, number 32147-25, on today's agenda will be used as the ordinance number for the second reading of the appropriation ordinance. There is no change to any of the content of the, of the ordinance, and the error was clerical in nature only, and the only change to this is the number.
Okay.
That is all that I have.
Thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Dixie, additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this morning's calendar. I do have a number of items to highlight, as we have some really great things recommending this morning. The first item I'd like to highlight is item number two. It is a service agreement with East Dayton Neighborhood Development Corporation. It's an $80,000 grant. It's a sub-recipient for the construction of the Ruskin Commons, a park located along Xenia Avenue and Ambrose Court, serving the Twin Towers neighborhood. This is part of Twin Towers Master Plan. It is a park that they will own, maintain, and we're excited to support their master plan and bring in more green space for the community to enjoy. Items number seven and 13 are particularly exciting. We have grant agreements with Sierra Nevada Company. Item number seven is a, is funding, aviation capital funding towards the new infrastructure of a ramp that supports the campus development that Sierra Nevada Company is doing at Dayton International Airport. This ramp infrastructure is a total $6.5 million project. This is $2 million of aviation capital towards that improvement, which is critical for them to be able to bring in the 747s and the larger planes to, to those now soon-to-be four-hangers operating at the airport. Item number 13 is a development agreement for the actual development of hangars of three and four. It, that, combined those, that project is a $94 million investment that creates 200 new jobs. This funding, the funding source for this $3 million grant is the development fund of 1.2 million, edge funding from the county of 1 million, and the Miami Township JED funding of $800,000. So we are very excited to support this investment, and that Sierra Nevada Company continues investing in their vision at the city of Dayton, and I believe you will hear later from a couple of Sierra Nevada Company representatives that are here to support this really important Also happening at the airport, there's a great deal of investment going. As responsible stewards of this regional asset, we have two contracts, a construction contract number nine with TK Airport Solutions. This is to increase or to replace our passenger boarding bridges that will, will improve efficiencies, but also improve passenger experience, as folks are using Dayton International Airport. This is a $10.4 million investment. There were three bids for this project. The lowest bid was disqualified because they had suggested refurbished bridges, and we want brand-new shiny bridges. So the next lowest and best bid bidder, TK Airport, was awarded this contract. Item number 10 is also an award of contract for Dayton International Airport with ZSR Contracting and Restoration. This is not as sexy as the bridges, but equally important, because it is investments to prolong the useful life of the parking garage, very similar to the kinds of things happening in our city hall parking garage right now. So this is a, almost a million dollar investment to address structural expansion, supports floor, ceiling, and all kinds of that infrastructure. Seven bids were received, and ZSR was selected as the best. So that is $11.5 million of aviation capital going into our regional asset to continue to enhance experience for our customers, as well as stewardship of our assets. Item number 12 is a development agreement with IMT Properties. This is a long, a long-awaited investment by Bombright Company. You will recall that we sold them the very southern part of Welcome Park for $135,000, and then they contributed $115,000 into the Dayton Bike Yard.
Right.
And that wonderful asset that we have. They, so we are thankful for Bombright's leadership and support in, and real community engagement with the neighborhood to make sure that, you know, that park was elevated and improved for, for a broad use with the neighborhood. And we're very thankful for the investment that IMT is making. They will be expanding their footprint by about 50,000 square feet with additional warehouse, meeting space, and new docks. So this $600,000 was supported by $250,000 in the development fund and $350,000 from Montgomery County Edge Program, so we're excited about that. And last but not least, is resolution number 6870-25, is the first reading for the adoption of the Westwood Neighborhood Plan. And I thought I would call Ellen Seizer forward of our planning department to provide a brief presentation, an overview of that plan that has been in the works for a bit.
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
Thank you for having me this morning. I'm going to be talking about the Westwood Plan, just give a general overview once this comes up. Okay, perfect. Okay, so today, I'm going to be talking about the Westwood Plan. So I just, first of all, wanted to just give kind of a where we're talking about, so I just wanted to show you the boundaries of the Westwood Neighborhood. So you have Kilmer to the east, and Gettysburg to the west, and then the, an anchor is Wesleyan Park to the north, and then Third Street. And then, secondly, there are Westwood Plan timeline, as you can tell, there's a lot of community engagement that went into this public process. I know it's hard to read, but I'm going to point out a few things that I think are important. The first thing, this initiative started in 2022 with a planning grant through the Montgomery County Land Bank, and Westwood Wright CDC provided a match fund with that, and so they went forward to have a planning contract with Urban Fast Forward, and from there, public engagement took off. And so since then, and more recent, planning staff, as well as community engagement, had meetings with Westwood neighbors, as well as Westwood leadership, and also we did extensive editing to the Westwood Plan, not to change the content, but just to make it as transparent as possible, clear as possible, and make sure it aligns with Westwood's goals as So this is the Westwood Plan table of contents, I just wanted to show you kind of what was going, what goes into the plan, and we'll talk about a few points that I think are important. So in general, the common themes that came out of the plan were these four. So we have gateway, streetscape, housing, and public space. So the first three, I just wanted to point out a few of the things that are in the plan. One key project was the Hoover and Westwood intersection. As you probably know, Hoover is a very busy street, and so this intersection and concept, future concept, will intend to lower the traffic, calming the traffic down, and also increasing the experience for the pedestrian. The other thing that came out of the Westwood Plan was gathering area improvements, to one of them being Gettysburg Park, and there's already been ongoing park improvements at Gettysburg Park, but this is taking already what's there and just trying to reactivate it, modernize it, and make it new. A main focus of the plan was housing, is housing, and three things that, I guess, three key themes that came out of those housing from the Westwood Plan was preserving long-term ownership, promoting energy sustainable practices, and then stabilizing property And that is all I have for you. So here are your decision options. You can concur with the plan board, remand the case, or deny the request. Do you have any questions?
Okay, questions, commissioners? Commissioner Turner Sloss?
Do you have any correspondence from, I know you said a number, I know you mentioned, thank you, Ms. Seizer, for your brief presentation this morning. Do you have any correspondence from the Neighborhood Association in support of the, you do have that available?
Yes, yes.
I know you mentioned a number of the.
Yes, so there, do you mean like, like a letter of support?
Yes.
Yes, we have those. There was a petition in favor of it about lots of neighbors, about 30 neighbors signed the petition, as well as a letter of support from Westwood Wright CDC and the Neighborhood Association, and I can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you. I do know they are in support, I just wanted to make sure that we mention that, we do have their, their support in writing of the, the plan itself, so thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, commissioners, Mr. Shaw?
No, I don't think so. I, I read the report, it's very thorough. I really appreciated that, so thank you for your work, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
Not good? Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great, great work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dixie, do you have anything else on the?
No, that is it, Your Honor.
That's it? Okay. So Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on City Manager recommendations?
One citizen, I think we need to vote on it, the remanding the case or denying their request or approving it.
Okay.
Sorry.
It was a pleasure.
I recommend we move forward.
Move forward?
Yes.
We can move forward.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't mean to leave you hanging.
So, thank you.
Your Honor, one citizen has registered, and I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on, you will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience and attendants, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly ask that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Cindy Gettag.
Your name and address by the record.
Good morning, my name is Cindy Gettag. My address is 602 Mountain Street, Brookville, Ohio.
You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you. As I mentioned, my name is Cindy Gettig. I work for S&amp;C on our corporate real estate department. I'm the project manager that has been overseeing the development in Dayton, particularly at the airport. Just wanted to take this time to thank the city for the continued partnership on our development at the airport. It has been hugely beneficial for Sierra Nevada's growth, and we greatly appreciate it. Would be happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the projects ongoing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No, Your Honor.
We're happy. The City Manager was good, very good in explaining all the things that's happening in the space.
Yes.
I think it's sort of impossible for the work on planes if we don't have a rampway to get them to your.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, yep, and they're pouring the concrete now, so it's looking great.
Gotcha.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Gettig. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, you're welcome. So, now, Commissioners, any questions from the, relative to City Manager's recommendations?
Yes, I do have one question, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. Question in regards to calendar item number 18. What do we know what, in fact, the recommendation is for the business? I know where, there's a proposal for moving from mature, single-family residential to transitional. Do we have an idea of what that business entails? I know it's business and space, meeting space. Ms. Dixon, can we call up Mr. Kroger, please?
Yeah, the specific business uses, at this point, basically undetermined. It was thought by the property owner that they would like to do a office-type use in that space that would mix in well with residential in the general vicinity, but also take advantage of being on the Salem Avenue corridor, which is a tough place to have a single-family home. So, the property owner was being proactive, saying, "I'd like to have some options here," and maybe an office, a home-based office-type use that would take advantage of the corridor, but also be, you know, not too much of an issue for the surrounding area.
And this is not in conflict with our overall plans for the corridor itself? Is that fair?
It helps it, and the adopted plan calls for a mix of uses on Salem, so I think this is beneficial for the property owner.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kroger, thank you, Ms. Dixon. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Shaw?
Just one, thank you, Mayor. One who mentioned that I'm going to be abstaining from items seven and 13 to avoid conflict ventures with my employer, but I want to thank both the staff for their work over all these years, putting these things together. This is wonderful. I want to thank my colleagues for their consistent and enthusiastic support. Thank you all.
Okay, so what we do, we'll pull those two items and vote on those separately. So, if I could have a motion then to approve City Manager's recommendations, minus those two items, seven and 13?
I move to approve the City Managers, minus those two items.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. They're probably moving second to approve City Manager's recommendations, minus items seven and 13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, now, a motion to approve items seven and 13.
So, move, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, they're probably moving second to approve items seven and 13. Let's do a roll call vote on that.
Mayor Memes.
Hi.
Commissioner Joseph.
I abstain.
Shaw.
Hi.
Turner, Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, good. Let's listen. Ms. Blackshear.
Second reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6863-25, authorizing the submission of grant application and authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from Montgomery County Solid Waste District in the amount of $15,720.94 on behalf of the city of Dayton. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner, Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading ordinance number 32146-25, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning of approximately 0.124 acres at 704-710 Salem Avenue from mature, single-family residential, MR5, to transitional T. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner, Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading ordinance number 32147-25, amending the city's appropriations for the year 2025. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner, Sloss.
Aye.
First reading Resolution Number 6870-25, concord with the adoption of the Westwood Neighborhood Plan. First reading Resolution Number 6871-25, authorizing the City Manager or her designee to apply for, accept, and execute a cooperative agreement between the City of Dayton, Ohio, and the Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA, for the refinancing of the 2015 water-revenue bond, the proceeds of which were used for the purpose of paying the cost of various improvements of the water system. First reading Resolution Number 6872-25, authorizing the City Manager or her designee to apply for, accept, and execute a cooperative agreement between the City of Dayton, Ohio, and the Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA, for the refinancing of the 2015 sewer-revenue bond, the proceeds of which were used for the purpose of paying the cost of various improvements to the sewer system. And that is all the legislation, Your Honor.
Okay. So, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
One citizen has registered, and I would like to remind that citizen that there is a three-minute time limit. I call to the podium David Woods.
Should we address it through the clerk?
Okay, I'll make sure to go. Your name and address for the record.
Well, they kind of need a picture so they can read it, there's names on it.
Okay, your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is David Woods at 3230 Lakeview Avenue.
You may begin.
Okay, hello there. My name is David Woods. I got the names of the doctors and nurses in Ketterman Campus Hospital that still to day have not told me that my dad is dead and I lie on his earth because I didn't see his dead body because they wouldn't let me on his main power attorney medical. I got the names from my lawyer, Robert, from Kirk Klein Smith of Dallas, Texas. Erica, my paralegal, from Kirk Klein Smith of Dallas, Texas, provided a list of the names of the doctors and nurses that have not told me my dad is dead on his earth. And also, they have not told my brothers and sister, and my sister, my second dad's power attorney medical, have not told her that my dad got slapped and choked by the male nurse. It has the name of all the doctors in the Chapman, pretty white woman Chapman, that see my dad got choked. And here's the names I'm going to play for you, because I couldn't say it myself, but I had this guy say it for me.
Dr. Niles Suresh Mahaskar. Dr. Rami Alashram. Dr. Shailendra Saw. Dr. Robert William Moore. Dr. Abidemi Bobby Akande. Dr. Hemant Mahendra Shah. Dr. Emily Franks. Dr. Ravi Y Desai. Dr. Nicholas Broughtingham. Dr. Lisa Comparin. Michelle Harrington, RN. Ajabureli, RN. John Armand Ocampo. Megan Rowe, RN. Catherine Kendrick, RN. Emily Dawson, RN. Patricia Evans, RN. Katie Curtis, RN. Michaeline Apollon, RN. Jermaine Harris, RN. Post-statement? These are the names of the chaplains listed in the medical records. Elliot Smith, Bernice Nunes, Stephen Nail, and the intern chaplains were Marcelina Cerritos, Maurice St. John, and Kevin Gill.
Yeah, those are the names of the doctors and nurses that have not told me that my dad is dead on his earth. And then, like I said, I've done a lawsuit, I called Ketterman Mayor and Inglewood Mayor, I told them on $50 million, you know, because I'm subpoenaing the chief of police, Sergeant Corey Fowler and Mike Lane, because I got trespass illegally in the law, they're going to tell the judge, but they told me that they never did tell them the incident. And also, my mother died seven months ago, they have not told my mother that my dad got choked by the male nurse. My dad served in the Vietnam War, and he was in the Vietnam War, he got choked in there, and he got disrespected. I want Donald Trump to go ahead and give him a war, and I thank you, and have a great day.
Okay, thank you for the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, so, Ms. Dixon, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a couple of different closing comments this morning. So, two days post-NATO, I want to, first of all, thank our staff for amazing work. Some of this work started nine, 10 months ago. Our Dayton Police Department, Dayton Fire Department walked through and put in a very thorough, comprehensive safety, security plan together. Public Works for all of their support around and within the establishment of NATO Village, as well as getting services into NATO Village every evening. All of the supporting departments that roll up their sleeves every time there's an event of large scale like this, the organization responds incredibly. And they may have nothing to do with the event, but they, you know, are there asking to support and supporting their colleagues. So, very proud of the organization. Public Works also instrumental in accelerating a lot of those streetscape projects that, as you know, we received funding in 2022 for, and those roll through a particular period of time, four, five years, to, in this case, it was TA money, so it was three years. And it was scheduled to happen, you know, before and finish after NATO, and the staff did an amazing job accelerating all of that so that the 90% of that work could be done ahead of time. So, very proud of that, because that is no easy task. It requires changes in processes and the way of doing our typical work, so very proud of that. Also, want to thank all the sponsors. There were a lot of private sector sponsors, there were a lot of institutional stakeholders that provided support, whether in kind or contributions. And without their support, we would not have had the successful event that we had. In talking with a lot of the delegates, as well as the NATO staff, they were supremely impressed and had a great experience in the city with regards to the event. And so, I'm just thankful that we are now beyond it, and we can all get back to our day jobs. And although there is the Concert for Peace tomorrow night as the kind of exclamation point, where the Sarajevo Philharmonic will join the Dayton Philharmonic, and if it's anything like the Sunday night event, it will be spectacular because the music was amazing. So, very excited about a successful NATO event. I also, at this point, would like to call forward our Finance Director, Kena Brown. So, as you know, Kena directs and guides us through our auditing process every year. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, affectionately known as GFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to City of Dayton for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2024. Three?
They're behind.
Oh, they are behind. I was like, wait, that has to be a typo.
Yeah.
The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The Government Finance Officers Association advances excellence in government finance by providing best practices, professional development, resources, and practical research for more than 21,000 members and the communities they serve. So, I just wanted to applaud Kena and her leadership. She leads the entire organization through this audit. It is not a simple task, and congratulations again for receiving the highest form of recognition from GFOA.
Okay. Your staff as well. Yes, the staff.
They really work over a span of five to six months every year to really compile the information, analyze the information, identify trends, to really put the story together on how the city operates financially. And so, thank you to that team, thank you to the city departments, who we reach out to on an annual basis with a plethora of requests on how their specific departments operate. So, thank you to them. Thank you to the City Manager's Office for your support and direction during this effort. And I also want to thank our external partner, Julian and group. They really helped put the bow on the final report. So, they ensure we comply with all GAAP requirements, all financial reporting requirements, so that we can get that report submitted timely to GFOA. So, thanks again to GFOA, thank you City Manager's Office and City Commission for allowing me to acknowledge the team.
Well, thank you for having such a great team. We did not think that you did that all by yourself. Okay, so, no, great, great, tremendous work.
Yeah, this is the 42nd consecutive year, I like to say, that we.
Okay, all right. So, old hat, then, so you accustomed to these applause. Okay, we appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it, Your Honor.
That's it? Okay. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, Commissioners, closing comments? Commissioner Turner, Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Very briefly, I just would like to echo Ms. Dixon's comments in regards to this weekend's number of events. It was well orchestrated, if you will, if that's the correct term to use. There was a lot of planning and organization that went along with that. We also, again, I just want to uplift the staff, to your point, like, the staff did tremendous work and all of the efforts. And from my understanding, there were staff that worked over the weekend as well, so the holiday weekend. So, again, I just wanted to uplift the work that was done and thank our community as well, a number of our residents who participated in some of the events and the peaceful protest that took place as well. I also want to make mention of this summer, the Department of Recreation is kicking off their Wreck Your Hood series. This is very innovative and creative. Thank you to our recreation department, bringing fun directly to our neighborhoods. The first event will take place in Old North Dayton on Saturday, June the 7th, from 1 to 4, and there will be a number of recreational activities, entertainment, resources, and fellowship. The department is also seeking volunteers to support a number of their summer events, including Wreck Your Hood and the July 3rd fireworks celebration. And if you are interested in helping out, please email wreck@datonohio.gov for more information or to sign up. Thank you, Ms. Reed, for providing this information, I really appreciate it. Again, I would like to thank Ms. Cindy Gregdeck, I believe, from S&amp;C for her brief presentation this morning and the support and all of the work that is being done in the Dayton area with the number of MRO hangers and investments that are being made at the Dayton International Airport. There's a lot of investment, a lot of activity that is going on, so I think that is, also speaks to the leadership and the direction of not only the City Manager, but also Mr. Gil Turner and the entire team. So, thank you for the number of investments that are being made to our Dayton International Airport, and the escalator is working right nonetheless. It's out and running. I would also like to congratulate Ms. Brown, thank you to your entire staff, and congratulations on the 42nd annual award in winning this, the GFAL, I believe I have the acronym correct. And you have a small but mighty team, and so I think that just speaks to your leadership and the amount of dedication and work that is being done, and the commitment of the team itself to receive this award. And let's see, the last thing that I wanted to make mention to as well is, again, thank you, Mr. Dango, for all of the work that you and your team are doing, as well as Mr. Daniels. Ms. Dixon, I appreciate your comments in regards to the urgency and regards to the demolition, but I just want us to be mindful when we look at equity, and we use that term equity, that we also cannot negate past practices of disinvestment that has taken place in west and northwest. So, let's just make sure that we are very mindful in some of those. So, let's just make sure that we're very mindful, and some of those areas are in more dire need than other areas when it comes to the removal of blight in our demolition efforts. But I really appreciate the additional context and all that goes along with the removal and moving from demolition to also the fire piles and the work that goes behind that. And I believe that's all I have this evening, this morning, rather. Excuse me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Well, I too, just wanted to personally thank all of the staff for their hard work over this NATO weekend. I saw you all out there working, and I just really appreciate the extra effort to make our city shine. All hands on deck, including the mayor. Thank you for your great work representing this commission and just representing our city. You know, standing up, well, and thank you too, Commissioner Joseph. He's a diplomat. Something that I recognized right away, translating and just reaching out to folks. I really...
Translating tremendously.
Yeah, I could tell that you've got training and background in that, and you put it to use well, so thank you very much. I was just thinking, you know, how my feet were hurting, standing up the whole time, and knees and all that, and you all did much more than I did. So, just really wanted to say that and appreciate you for it. Also, the Chamber of Commerce and their leadership did a lot of work in this space, and just want to thank them for that as well. There was a significant investment that we will all be able to benefit from now on, so really appreciate that. And congratulations, city manager, for your work.
You know, I did forget to say one thing. This Saturday, from 9:00 in the morning till like 11:00 at night, is a community celebration downtown for, the partnership is orchestrating an event to invite people to downtown to enjoy and experience. There's art wraps and sculptures, and they're going to, I believe, have food trucks, and they're really just trying to invite and have everybody come and be able to kick off the summer by enjoying the investments that were put in place ahead of NATO.
That's great. And speaking of that, the inaugural first Friday at the North Arcade is this week. Join the event. There'll be 15 local vendors, live music, and great food inside Dayton's newly revitalized North Arcade on June 6, from 5:00 to 8:00 on West 3rd Street. That'll happen.
Good. Commissioner Joseph, the diplomat.
Thank you, Mayor.
Training with Commerce and Attorney Hall's office. I'm not sure how many decades ago.
Some, some decades ago.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor. It was a real pleasure. But just like you, Commissioner, I want to thank our staff. We did excellent, not only paid, we had staff volunteering. Holiday weekend, showing up at strange times, working hand in hand with many other organizations, the partners. I can't say enough, city manager, I know you will, please thank all of your staff who are involved. We are in their debt, and frankly, this country is in their debt. The fact that we were the hosts of this event doesn't just happen. We created the conditions for successful discussions by our diplomats, our U.S. diplomats, with partners and prospective partners worldwide that promote peace. And not every city gets a chance to take part in that. Not every city can say that. And I think we can be very proud of not only that we did it, but that we did it so effectively. Just like you said, city manager, we heard, we all heard time and time again about how friendly the people of Dayton were, how friendly officers were, how friendly everybody, all the volunteers and the people that the delegates came in contact with. We heard it a million times. We heard it once, and I witnessed it myself. Courteous, helpful, thoughtful. That is the way you set conditions to promote peace for us and for the world. So, thank you very much. Please direct that to all your staff. We really appreciate that. Thank you, of course, to all the partners, from Congressman Turner on down. Everybody worked together, put this together, UD and the partnership and Chamber, all the ones that have been mentioned. If I start mentioning, I'm going to forget people, so I'm not going to stop there. But the partners were incredible. Everyone came together, put it together. And I will end with the fact that there is a concert tomorrow night, Thursday night. There are still tickets available, the Concert for Peace. This is at the Schuster, a combined Sarajevo and Dayton Philharmonic Orchestra. We've heard bits and pieces of the Sarajevo Philharmonic's music, and it was sensational, just them.
Excellent.
And tomorrow, we get the combined Philharmonic. Tickets are 12 bucks. It's cheap. There are still tickets available, so you're going to want to hear this. I'm telling you, you're going to want to hear this. So, go to Dayton Live's website and get that, get those tickets bought. And just one other notice, Miami Valley Immigration Coalition is hosting a community mobilization event this weekend, Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the IUE Hall on Jefferson, focusing on immigration policy, how it impacts our community, their breakout sessions, interpreters, kid-friendly activities, and I encourage you to come. That's this Saturday, May 31, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the IUE City of V.A. Hall. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, again, my colleagues have said it all, Commissioners, I'd like to, to the best of our ability, see if we can get the names of all these sponsors and make sure that we give them a nice thank you, if you will, to let them know just how much we appreciate their enrollment, I mean, their involvement, if you will, in terms of the whole process. Again, everything that was said by Commissioners, I had the opportunity to notice that firsthand hearing the concert this past Sunday, as well as being at very, very different types of functions throughout the week that they were here several days, to hear comments from everybody. Comments about the war, comments about Ukraine, comments about the veteran session on Sunday morning, talking about how painful it is sometimes to think, and of course, it caused me to have some reflections as well, that while the average citizen is in a position to do for themselves, do for their family, do for their friends, even the holidays, birthdays, et cetera, to not miss some of those type of situations, when those who are in war are in strange, difficult places, fighting for the rights and privileges of our constitution or the constitution of their respective countries. This is more special than I think a lot of people realize in terms of being in, on the world stage, if you will, talking about peace, not only just from across the world because we see those challenges, but also in these United States and also in our communities to help more and more individuals just look at the value of every individual and seeing, and also self, and seeing how you can promote that and use your skills, your talents, to improve the quality of life for not just yourself, but for those who are around you. It just cannot be underscored. So, again, just thank all of you for your role in terms of this situation. I will miss the concert, unfortunately. However, it's because I'm going to be in and out of town for the next couple of days. I have two graduating grandsons out of town, one from college and one from high school. And while my oldest grandson will be graduating from Columbia in New York, my youngest grandson will be graduating from St. Luke School in Connecticut. And he will follow his father to play soccer at Howard University. So, I can't begin to tell you just how proud I am and how happy I am as not just a father, but a former soccer coach, okay? So, he must have gotten those skills somewhere in the neighborhood of the family and moved into that space. So, I'm elated. So, if you hit me or touch me, you'll see, I probably won't even notice it because I got so much installation of joy that without feeling. But just enjoy yourselves, enjoy the lives, and think that all of us will have such a great time this weekend with so many great things happening. And with no further business, to come forth as commission, love and peace for all and hatred for none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. All right. Well done.